Everybody. Shall we get started? How should we proceed?
So, need.
I'll let you.
Okay, I will.
Second it.
I'll leave some coaching, I'm sure. Well, I will do my best. Okay. Oh, yeah, so we did look at. We, you know, did everybody get a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, I was able to take a peek at it as well, and I. I move that we. Accept it. A call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, perfect. Oh, she's voting. And we need to approve the minutes as well?
That's what we just did.
That was, that was just on.
That was the agenda, sorry.
Okay.
Move that we approve the minutes?
I'll second it.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Consent agenda items are, are no items, it looks like, and then administrative session, there are also no items. There's two items in the legislative session in the public hearing. There is there the, the first. Should I just read these, Josh? Springville City Community Development requests adoption of residential and commercial subdivision. Application checklists. It's the first. Okay. Carla, do you want to shed some light on that first? Public hearing piece?
All right, so. This is kind of discombobulated. And many of you were not on the commission at the time, but in no- November, I believe, of twenty twenty-three, we came before the planning commission with revisions to Title fourteen. Sorry, Title fourteen of the subdivision, which is our subdivision regulations. The state had made changes in state code mandating that we. That we make change, that required us to make some changes as well. So we went in and we did those. And they went and the count, or the commission moved those on to the council with a positive recommendation, the council voted them. And in an effort to. Make our, our code a little bit less. Lengthy and complicated. We took out the list that was included of all the things that were required for a developer to have a completed application. So it was very technical, you have to show this, this, and this, you have to turn in this, and all, so. We took all of that out and instead made. Reference to a sub, a preliminary and final subdivision checklist. That they could refer to, and there's a link, so that would go to it automatically, and it would just be a little bit more efficient. Well, we didn't adopt the checklist, which we found out that that was necessary to do as well. And so as we've been doing our internal DRC, it was, we realized that we don't really have anything saying what's a complete application right now, we really need to work on this. So we did pending legislation resolution with the council. As if you're familiar, pending legislation just allows you to be working on some type of change. And be able to rely on that. Incoming change to be the governing document. Is that correct, Josh? Should I explain that correctly, kind of? Okay.
Basically, our recommendation to the council after the approval.
Yeah, yes, yes, and so it gives us something legal to stand on while we go through this process. And so now, as we come before you. In a more organized manner now, we have the list that has been put together, it's been reviewed by. The internal DRC, which is all of the departments, engineering, planning and zoning, power, all of that. One thing that we did not have is power kind of had their own little separate thing that they were doing. And that had, we recognized that that had caused some glitches in the review process. It's all included on here now, and we do need to make a couple of little fine tunings on the power, but this, for right now, is the checklist that we have. So we're kind of doing this backwards, and when, and now that they've passed the resolution for the pending legislation, we come to you to actually do the recommendation of the checklist, so that the council can formally vote on them and adopt them.
So Carla, when we, when you do this, do you also have your attorneys look at this, or your attorney?
Oh, yes, yes. Part of our internal DRC includes everyone, including the, our admin, who can make comments regarding city policy or questions that we need to look at for the bigger picture, and then our legal, everyone is there. And then we also had individual meetings with our legal to make sure that we had what we needed as well.
I had a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Kind of in the minutia, but more just, I have PTSD from some projects I've done, and I want to.
Oh, I tell, yeah, I totally feel ya.
And so there are a couple of things in the section that's final plat and improvement drawings shall include. It's on page thirteen.
Okay, thank you.
The first item on the list says that building envelopes shall not be shown on the final plat. I was curious as to if we should include that list item. Yes or no, because I've done projects where, depending on the way the occupancy is set up and the way that the HOA is set up. That the plat itself is the building footprint. So I don't know that it would be entirely necessary that we include that as a list item and taking that away from the developer as an option to do.
So your question is, should we say they can't be, or should we not say that they should not be included?
Right, I, I think that should be left up to the developer in how they're planning on managing common space versus building envelope.
The, the reason we're doing that is, and it's pretty general practice, is because when you do have like a fee simple lot or a condo or something, that's recognized that, you know, you're, you're zero lot line, you have common and limited common in area. You don't necessarily need to show the building envelope on there to communicate that. And. I've actually ran into problems on a couple of projects where they recorded plats for attached condominium units before they were constructed and then had to go and revise the plat to accommodate construction. What we don't want to do is put building envelopes on the plat, which is a permanent perpetual document. That could change with zoning regulations. So if your plat says you have a twenty-foot setback, but we've changed it to ten, or it says you have a ten, but now you have a twenty, there arise arguments over does this plat entitle me to have a ten-foot setback, not a twenty, or can I now get the newer, better, the more advantageous setback? So generally, in the areas I've worked, we've tried to avoid that, and I don't think it limits somebody's ability on a single-family attached or condominium-type project to. Describe lots that are contiguous with the, with the building footprint.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more just considering the potential of people trying to plat the building envelopes as airspace plats. And which are attached to the building envelope and shake.
Like a condo plat?
Like a condo plat, or even, I did a townhome project where everything outside the building envelope was limited common. And they couldn't build outside of their footprint because it was no longer theirs.
And we'd just, those lots would just be co-terminous with the.
Right, and so, and it followed the exact building footprint of the, of what was plotted as well as what was being built.
And that's fine.
Okay.
Well, because that's not describing the build, the, the. Buildable envelope, it's just describing a, a lot that also happens to be co-terminous with the building.
And that's, that was where my question was.
Typically, when people do this, they'll show how you have an R one-ten lot, and they'll show the buildable envelope. The zoning envelope inside of that, the five-foot setbacks and the ten-foot in the rear, and then say, here's your buildable area, and then somebody comes in later and it's changed, then we have a problem.
Right, okay.
Yeah, that was actually, we had a great deal of discussion about that internally as. You know, is it best practices to have it recorded on the final plat, is it not? And for the reasons that Josh has outlined, it was determined both with our legal and our planning and just for good principles to not have that recorded. So, one thing I did not tell you is, so with the state statute that required the changes. They made some clarifications regarding that we are, we are only allowed four reviews. When we're doing this, but they did make some clarifications that the city, to a certain extent, can determine when those reviews are done, whether they're done at the preliminary or the final. It depends upon how the city works as far as where they get the majority of their engineering reviewed. And so we do that at preliminary, so we will have our four reviews at preliminary and have made sure that the checklist provide that all of that information is done at preliminary, so we have that. So, that's more just, you know, fun information you can keep in the back of your head for land use jeopardy or whatever.
And I just had one last thing. On that same page thirteen. I just wondered if we could include a word maximum when it's talking about. Provide a street tree plan, showing the spacing of forty feet. More just because it, I think if a developer wants to put more trees in.
Right, it is a minimum, and our code reflects that, so we could add minimum of one tree for every forty feet, because that's what our code currently is. To me, that's too big of a gap.
Right.
Uh, it's not tight enough, but that's where our code is right now.
Right.
So we can add a minimum in there for sure.
Yes, we certainly can do that. Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? For me, at least?
The, under the power section, just on the next, the, the no power structures replaced with two feet of driveway, that is in red because that was added recently?
Yes, and so, and there, and we had to make sure that we had the, the verbiage correct as far as. How it met with engineering and how they put, and so it was a late add.
Are they including communication pedestals as part of the power, or is that just utilities?
We don't have any purview over comms or gas, other than they have to be in the PUE.
Got it.
Unfortunately.
Like this references power, a power structure as opposed to.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only, and this may not even apply to what you're talking about, because this shows you my lack of knowledge about how power does everything. But there are. Details in the standards and specifications for power as to how those other groups must align their systems with powers as far as the distance away and the depth and all of that, and that is outlined specifically in their standards and specs.
But not on the checklist?
Not on the checklist, no.
Would, would it be beneficial to, or is that just a redundancy?
It's really redundant, this tells them what they need to provide, and then the standards and specs tells them how to produce that, what the standards are for producing that drawing.
Yeah, so you have to show us this, then the standard and specs say, and you have to show us that it's at twelve feet or four feet or whatever, I'm making numbers up.
And the standards and specs is a substantial document, basically listing out every specification and detail of their design.
Yes, and we are going over that right now with power, it hasn't been updated for a while, and so they're going through and updating that, and you guys will get to see that soon, too. So I bet you're so excited.
It's equivalent to that we say, you know, you got to show setbacks and everything, but you have to go to our code to understand what all the, you know, how big the streets are and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we don't list those all individually in the code, we just say that you have to show them. All right, have I answered all of your questions so far? Okay, thank you.
No, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, you can, I'll take it over.
I'm just saying.
If you want to keep suffering through, then I'll continue, but. So what, what happens next? Open the public hearing, okay? Okay.
Seeing no one coming to the podium, I move to close the public hearing.
There we go. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Do you have a motion?
We, we, we have to.
I have a motion, I have a second.
We do, okay. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Very good. Yeah, this is the second item here?
No.
Or that's, that was covered in, okay. Okay, anything else? Discuss?
I'll move to recommend the adoption of the subdivision application checklist by the city council. Oh. I don't think, I don't think so.
They're already there. I second it.
Call for a vote, we'll load on this now. Okay, all those in favor of say the word. Adopting this or motion, the motion to recommend this? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye as well. Okay, we're to the adjournment.
No.
Anything else? Where are we at, gentlemen?
Moving us along.
Yeah. Uh, what else we have? This item two, Springville City Development Requests. Okay, Josh? Let us know on this piece.
This is pretty simple. It's essentially the result of the fact that I continue to learn and that we continue to implement and refine and that urban design is not a completely objective hard science. So we're coming to you today to make some changes to the Main Street South Gateway Zone that encompasses the Allen's Block and Main Street frontage, south to eight south. We previously, or the current requirement requires. That a minimum floor-to-ceiling heights for all building types, but has a caveat for townhomes. That if you're at least eighteen inches above sidewalk grade at your finished floor elevation, then you can reduce your minimum clear floor-to-ceiling height for the main floor to eight, nine. As, and here's a diagram, this is a, a drawing from the Allen's Block project. So here's your ground, here's your finished floor elevation, and then each of these numbers represents your clear floor-to-ceiling height. So, yeah, as I mentioned, we previously required it for all building types, but in, we don't, especially for townhomes in, in other zones with similar kind of massing and form-based regulations. And no other zone in the city has these requirements for single-family units or, or single-family homes or townhomes. It really complicates the design and construction of the townhomes, especially when you put together the fact that we're kind of pushing you up on the bottom with eighteen inches finished floor above grade, and then we've got a prescribed minimum or maximum height, it kind of compresses the building, and especially with the depth of your structural members in your floor and those kind of things, it starts cutting things really close or requiring. Flush framing and other types of things that unnecessarily increase the cost of the unit. And as we've looked at this, we, I really put this in initially to make sure that the buildings on Main Street fit in with the urban context. What happens occasionally with newer infill vertical mixed-use buildings is the first floor is too short. I, I don't know why that's so hard, because people that build retail pads. I get their height right. But for first-floor vertical mixed-use product often, and because of, you know, design and engineering and sheer requirements. Those are pushed to kind of minimums, and that doesn't really fit with the character of our downtown or most historic downtowns that needed, that had tall first floors with lots of windows to be able to bring light into the unit and provide, you know, vertical space for storage, you know, your general store would have shelves all the way up, full of goods. And we have a lot of examples of variation in that from like the, out the. Reynolds Building, which has a very, very tall first floor, I mean, it's a three-story building at fifty-three or fifty-four feet. We have some shorter, but the average through the work that I've done, kind of measuring and paying attention, is fourteen feet, but. And that's what we've included for a commercial. But townhomes aren't permitted on Main Street, and the, the context of the townhomes is secondary buildings on the cross streets or residential buildings across the street, so it's really not an essential requirement. And as I mentioned, it has made it harder to design and build townhomes. And as we've looked at other zones where we've done townhomes, and particularly like in Westfield Central. None, well, actually, one of the townhome buildings, you can, you get a pretty good idea what it looks like now. But most of the townhome designs haven't been executed, but in terms of the designs, we haven't seen, they haven't suffered from not having a nine-foot first floor or a ten-foot first floor. But something that has played out and been important there that we don't require, but is an option in the current Main Street South Gateway Zone to get that reduced first floor height is a minimum first floor elevation of eighteen-inch above sidewalk. What we're proposing tonight, so that we get rid of the floor-to-ceiling clear heights for the building, but we require all townhomes to be built at eighteen inches above sidewalk grade. And that really helps mediate between the public realm of the sidewalk and the kind of the semi-private realm of the front porch and the private realm of the interior. It brings the relationship between somebody in the unit or somebody sitting on the porch to something that feels more comfortable and establishes a little bit of separation and privacy for those units, those ground floor units, or ground floors of those townhomes to have a little bit of elevation. And that, that's proved to be really key in improving a lot of the designs, or making the designs work in Westfield Central. So the staff recommendation is that we, is that you recommend approval of the proposed amendments, which do remove the floor-to-ceiling height minimums for townhomes and then establish a, a universal eighteen-inch finished floor above sidewalk requirement for townhomes.
Is that what it is in Westfield Central?
Yes, it's, it's eighteen. I'm not even sure that's right, and there are diagrams showing these relationships between the sidewalk and the porch and the setbacks, but eighteen inches is a good rule of thumb.
Oh, so it's not already set in Westfield?
It is already set in Westfield, from the beginning, yes.
Oh, it is from Westfield. So we just kind of be expanding that to.
Correct.
All townhomes and reducing.
Well, in the Main Street South Gateway Zone.
Oh, just in the Main Street.
Correct.
So on, on page three, it has the, that lined out, the eighteen inches above the sidewalk grade in addition to the floor-to-ceiling height.
Yes, and it's, that was specifically because that was the exception to let you reduce your floor-to-ceiling height if you use.
If you did the eighteen.
And so it's been added in, in four A two at the end of the paragraph. Additionally for townhomes.
Any issues with that in Westfields that, that you've seen since that's been implemented?
No, there has been some questions with whether in some of the rear lane units that. Are front on the lane, whether it's necessary. But I still think. Well, it's requiring a step up from the garage almost everywhere, except for where the architect didn't look at the actual site before he built it, and they had to change, you know, when they poured the foundation and realized they were like five feet out of the ground on the front. But generally, I still feel that it's, has been useful in those rear lane units to, again, for that kind of mediating between public and private space, especially because some of them. Most of the lofts don't, some of the lofts have some decent porches, but most of the muse homes have some decent porches and providing that little bit of height from somebody that's walking by. Has, I, I think is still important in that setting.
Because aren't, aren't some of these like directly connecting to the sidewalk? They're in front of the school.
Pretty, pretty close.
Yeah.
Yeah, you've got the minimum, and this is where. Tolerant, I've, I'm starting to learn about tolerances in civil, in like, construction. That there's a two, a ten-foot setback, and then the, for a certain type of townhome, that townhome that's being built on the corner south of the cottage that's enclosed. Those four townhomes, their front porches can encroach to within two feet of the sidewalk, but the sidewalk. The guy's doing the concrete struggle, so the sidewalk swings into the property line and then back out of the property line, and so the tolerances aren't great. So some of them look a little closer, but only in the mixed-use building can it sit right at the property line. And I think even on that building, it's, it's two feet. But yeah, they're, they're much closer, like the stoops, you basically step to the side, the, the porch right off the sidewalk.
The steps are not included in that piece, it's just the porch itself is actually.
Right. Right.
Back, and so when you step down the steps.
You basically land on the sidewalk.
The sidewalk, yeah.
Yeah, and so that, the closer the porch is to the sidewalk, the more important that grade difference becomes. And as we've got, I don't know, one, two, three. Now they just poured yesterday on the, on Ninth, but three houses that are up and framed that have the porches are done, and it's feeling, it's feeling, at least to me, it's feeling pretty good. In terms of height difference.
Any feedback from any of the builders on other challenges associated with this, or?
Uh, no, this has been primarily, the challenge is doing zoning and having the architect say, yeah, that works, and then going to the engineer and having the engineer remind them that they can't span twenty-four feet with a twelve-inch, you know, TGI. That you've got to go to a bigger beam, and you got to flush frame it, and then things start falling apart.
So. We don't have a, like, a limit on the number of stories, right? I think I remember like some discussion that the minimum ceiling, floor-to-ceiling heights would kind of create limit on the number of stories.
Uh, well, we have a maximum height, and none of our maximum heights are like, give you any room. Our maximum height for four stories is forty-five feet, which gives you absolutely zero room to get a fourteen-foot first floor and have any breathing, any, any fluff in the rest of the building. So that's one reason I'd really. I'd rather do stories than height, because then we run into these constructability issues and variants, variations between buildings. But generally, that floor-to-ceiling was to create the right proportions in the building and to make sure that we were getting a marketable product. But on the, on the townhome side, I just don't see why the market can't just decide how tall they want the ceilings.
And so this only affects the townhomes, not any other housing?
No, just townhomes and the Main Street South Gateway Zone. That's all I have, if there are no additional questions?
No, any other discussion here? Say it. Oh, we need to open the public hearing. Okay. Anybody want to?
I'll move to recommend approval of the.
Oh, wait, no, we got to close the public hearing first.
Oh, yeah, that's sorry, close, I, I make a movement to clo, move to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
So we need to vote on this, then?
Any discussion?
Any discussion from us? Further?
On the closing of public.
Oh, yeah, well, you're right.
All in favor?
All in favor, thank you.
Aye.
Closing the hearing. Aye, thank you, Hunter. Okay.
As far, as far as discussion goes, I just seeing everything happening, I, I one-hundred percent agree with this. Josh is doing a great job with Carla in making sure that public and private is maintaining separation, even in conditions like in the Westfields. I, I do think it's important, um, but at the same time, uh, I'm interested to see how it affects the Main Street South Gateway. There, there is an example in Spanish Fork, kind of over by McCorazone, where they built those townhomes that are right, they're an offshoot of their Spanish Fork Main Street. And those sit right at grade and you can tell that there's no real separation from public to private. But, uh, my head just starts spinning, it just, not, just, th- that there are occasions that it may be appropriate, appropriate, depending on the architectural style to keep that down, but we won't get into that because I don't know that, the level of builders or designers that we're going to be dealing with are necessarily there yet. I think the more they build in Westfield Central and everything that...
My concern has been visitability, uh, which I didn't know what this meant before, so I'll tell you. Uh, accessibility for peo- uh, people with mobility handicaps. And with, there's ways to do this and it obviously starts at the subdivision level of how the subdivision is graded, uh, the whole drainage and graded, drainage and grading plan and providing alternative entries that are accessible other than the front porch, but then there's also the question about, uh, you know, the equity of that in public buildings. Even in historic buildings, the general consensus is if you can accommodate a, a ADA facility at the front of the building at the primary entrance, you should do that. Uh, and it can be done con- you know, contextually or it sensitively. So, there was a big presentation on that at the APA conference last year and one of the presenters, uh, had, you know, mobility impairment and was in a wheelchair and he said, so how many of you raise your hand if I wanted to come to dinner tonight at your house, could I? And I couldn't raise my hand because he could get in the basement door or the walkout basement door and that's as far as he could get. So, that, that has had me thinking about it a lot. But I haven't re- reconciled the two interests, yeah.
And that's where it's like, I, I don't know that we need to address everything all upfront now, but like, a condition that maybe it, it could happen to in a, in a townhome scenario would be like active adult attached cottages. And where active adult cottages, they usually keep them as low to the ground as possible, roll in po- if they can. But again, I, I don't know that it's appropriate that we have planned for every scenario. And if there is a variance that needs to be had, I think as a planning commission, we can see all their building active old cottages, they need to have the variance. So, I don't know, I, I generally, it just, I was just saying, I agree.
Well, and you bring up a good point too, that, you know, somebody moves in and needs to retrofit it because of either circumstances after they bought it or even when they wanted to buy it, they're, you know, they're going to retrofit it for accessibility by some sort of ramp or, or cement entry por- portion. It, it, I think as long as it allows for that, as we're looking at that and this 18-inch difference allows in, in, this two feet from the sidewalk brings up a good point because now you're going to use all of that to get your ramp in, in place, right? You'll have a ramp contiguous with the sidewalk in, in, in a lot of cases. On a retrofit.
In this particular case, they have garages in the back. They could build, they could build ramps in the garage.
There's really not, it's, at, at 18 inches, even if you were lower, there's, and at 20, let's say 22 feet on kind of a wider unit in this, in downtown, you really don't have room at the front to get actually a, a, at least a compliant ramp up. Uh, but we've all seen non-compliant ramps, but it's more likely to happen in the, in the garage and that's where grading can make a difference, uh, by bringing the alley up a little bit. Like the townhomes, if you go to Westfield Central, there's townhomes that are enclosed on the north. Their alley's quite high and I can't remember, I walked across, but they were essentially going to, their main floor was a couple steps up from the garage, but when they realized the alley was like four feet higher than the road, uh, they just did it level. And so, those would be at least visitable.
Is that something we should consider in the setbacks then out front? Because that's, a- again, that's going to be a preference, especially if you have, for example, my agent mother comes to visit, we need to roll her in the front door. We, we don't want to pull the car out of the garage to get her into the garage, y- all kinds of scenarios. Is that something we should consider either in the setback or in this itself right up front?
I, I think it's a, probably a broader discussion about visitability, uh, standards and how we should be evaluating that and implementing it. The, I think there's solutions that both maintain...
Cosmetic.
Well, the, the sense of enclosure in the street wall and adjacency that we want to maintain in certain settings with visibility, uh, questions or visibility issues. It's just another thing that keep, I always, there's a new consideration that pops into my mind and I'm like, oh. Now that I know this, I feel, you know, obligated to...
Burden of knowledge.
Yes, exactly.
Well, any recommendations that you, I mean, we're going to be good to go forward this way and, and a- adjust accordingly?
For now, yes, uh, I mean, the, the other issue with these townhomes is they, all they have on the main floor is a small, or like, in, what we've currently seen in downtown and some of the product in Westfield Central, uh, is second-floor living. So, just they are by default not, you know, my, my Parkinson's and, uh, polyafflicted mother-in-law is not coming to visit us in those houses. But it's, it's, it's definitely an issue we need to think about.
Motion?
I was in an effort to get us out of this meeting really fast.
I did my part. Tyler had us disappointed.
I tried to adjourn like 20 minutes ago.
No, that's a great, great thought, a good discussion, uh, helpful, at least for me, hopefully of somebody else.
I move to recommend approval of the amendment to Springville City Code 11 dash 4 dash 7084 to eliminate the minimum clear floor-to-ceiling height and adopt a minimum finished floor elevation for all townhomes in the Main Street South Gateway Zone.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of this recommendation?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is everything, correct?
Motion.
Motion? Motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.